Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting of the Lakewood City Council for this Monday, October 17, 2022, to order. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey has also been excused. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas as well as here at home, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Well, thank you and welcome for coming tonight. We first start with proclamations and presentations, and tonight we have a proclamation recognizing disability employment awareness month. And for this, we have Tara Zink, the Employment and CI Program Specialist with Pierce County, who will join us virtually to receive the proclamation that I'll present on behalf of the council. Good evening, Tara. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Well, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm pleased to present this proclamation on behalf of the city of Lakewood to mark the 77th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas the theme of this year's month is disability, part of the equity equation, and is celebrated to recognize the vital role people with disabilities play in making the nation's workforce diverse and inclusive. And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including those of all abilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong economy here in the city of Lakewood. And whereas studies have found that Americans with disabilities are especially productive and motivated workers, but they have a harder time getting jobs, promotions, and fair pay, and are three times less likely than others to be employed, and often earn subminimum wages for their efforts. And whereas during this month, we reinforce the value and talent people of all abilities add to our workplaces, our communities, and the city of Lakewood affirms its commitment to developing and maintaining an inclusive organization that increases access and opportunities to all internally for city employees and externally for our residents. And whereas the city of Lakewood celebrates the many and varied contributions of people of all abilities, now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby recognizes and commemorates the 77th anniversary of Disability Employment Awareness Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to recommit to promoting equal opportunity for people of all abilities by continuing to advance equitable recruitment, hiring, and retention policies and practices, and to pursue goals of opportunity, full participation, self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities in our community. Reclaim the 17th day of October 2022, Jason Whalen, Mayor. And Tara, on behalf of the organization and those folks at Pierce County that celebrate this with us, I thank you for coming, and the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks so much for having me. I appreciate the proclamation and appreciate the recognition of the contribution of our disability community to our workforce and encourage anyone with questions or inquiries about how to help your workforce become more diverse by hiring people with disability to reach out with any questions.
Well, again, thank you very much, and we'll make sure that a copy of this is delivered to your office.
Thank you so much.
Next, we turn to the public comment of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live, virtual, or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at our address 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, 98499, or to her email address at bshumaker@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to us electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Mike and Sherry Arkell, Casey Crook, Sean Hill, Christina Minetti, Eric Seibel, Cecilia and Rob Warren, and Kim Underwood.
Thank you very much. And just as a reminder, we do appreciate receiving written comments in advance, and you need not, sure, authorized and able to repeat those orally if you wish, but we have received them and they are part of our record. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business under this public comments period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments are also authorized. If you'd like to provide live, virtual public comments, you need to join the Zoom meeting, as indicated on the screen, as an attendee, by dialing the phone number indicated, entering the meeting ID number, and pressing the star nine dial to use the raise your hand feature to be called upon. We typically rotate calling on folks back and forth, and so I will first call tonight on those on Zoom who have raised their virtual hand to address the council during this public comment period, followed by those who are here who have signed up in person to address the council during the public comment period. But fear not, if you didn't get your name down on the sheet, I'm more than happy to open the call and allow you to comment tonight if you're here. So we will first start, Madam Clerk, with those who have signed in to address the council virtually. And again, if you've provided written comments, you need not repeat them here, but you're certainly authorized to. The first I see is Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, that's good. So actually, I'm not going to read my comment. I'm going to read one from Judith Minetti of Lakewood, who wasn't able to submit it before six. "I'm here today," well, she's not here today, "to comment on the inadequacy of the proposed tree preservation code amendments. Surely most residents of Lakewood can see and appreciate the benefits and beauty of the trees, being the wonderful natural resource which enhances large parts of our city. Trees are one of nature's gifts. We need to treasure them as if they were made of gold. Every single tree is a critical environmental factor. As we move about our city, we must not take trees for granted, nor just ignore the trees. Pay attention, appreciate them, love them, join together as a forward-thinking community to save our trees. Lakewood absolutely needs to protect the trees which currently grace our city, their namesake. Lakewood would be well advised to actively promote tree canopy preservation and not just expansion. There can be no expansion without preservation. In our city, this means preserving the mature Gary Oaks that produce acorns is essential. Protection for saplings and young growth is crucial as the future lies within each of them. We need to make conditions suitable for seedlings, saplings, and immature trees. We must focus on mature trees for propagation of the species, but also for their great contributions of the comforting relief of shade, production of oxygen, sequestration of carbon, and as wildlife habitat. These are things of which we are becoming more sharply aware as environmental factors have reached a state of greater urgency. As effects of climate change become more intense, Gary Oaks in particular will become increasingly more important contributors to the quality of life in our community. Symbolic changes in municipal regulations are not good enough. Getting down to the nitty-gritty of the rapidly developing degradation of our planet, human habitation is what is at stake. In Lakewood, we must not allow ourselves to muddle along until we come to a point of no return. Now is actually when Lakewood needs to actively participate in worldwide efforts to ensure the continuation of sustainable life on Earth. We still have an opportunity to make positive choices to save trees for ourselves and for posterity. We have the chance to serve as a shining example for other places to emulate. At this precise moment in time, without a doubt, wise planning for conservation and urban forestry is essential. To do otherwise is unforgivable." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Okay, there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis, I'm from Sioux Falls, formerly a resident of Lakewood. And quite often I've been called a racist, which in reality is just means that in a discussion or development of ideas, a person has run out of any kind of depth and doesn't have the answers or know the answers, so he runs under the cover of calling somebody a racist. You know, it's very interesting that there's a tremendous number of black people that support mega policies. They gotta understand that in terms of policies, because mega to some people is just a crazy word that they don't understand. So I'm gonna read some of the great leaders that are coming on that are black. And one that was a great Trump supporter was Elvita King, which is, I believe, an aunt to Dr. Martin Luther King. And so we'll read some of these famous people and well-respected. Leo Terrell, a black man who is a very formidable civil rights attorney, has has become very much of a a constitutional rights attorney, which usually means conservative. Thomas Sowell is the head of the Hoover Institute. You've got just a whole list of them. Dr. Ben Carson was on the Trump team. And he, of course, was the first surgeon to separate two Siamese twins. Charles Payne, he's a black man, a very prominent financial advisor. Tim Scott, of course, is doing great things down there in South Carolina. Daryl Scott, Candace Owens, Lawrence Jones. What a, what a reporter. He started out as a reporter, now he has his own show. Kanye West, Lawrence Jones, Kevin Cork, Larry Elder, Ethel Neville, Harris Faulkner. These are all black people that very much support what were the Trump policies, which were put to an end the minute that Biden became president. So, you know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next is James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. So looking around Lakewood, you can see that many of the trees are dying. It's perhaps no one in Lakewood's fault always. It's just maybe it's climate change for whatever reason, this massive amount of dry weather we're getting. But some trees are under more threat and pressure than others. And in many ways, in many cases, there is nothing that can be done. But we do know that the one tree that is going to be most resistant to drought, most resistant, for example, to fire damage and whatever, and so on, is the Gary Oak. Gary Oak is also iconic to Lakewood. Now, I do appreciate that the, with the Ad Hoc Tree Committee, has looked at Gary Oaks and has given them better protections from other trees. And I believe your plan, I mean, I'm hoping that you are going to end the 17,000 square feet cutoff, at least for Gary Oaks. However, they continue to be cut down. And we've had a lot of talk about canopy. We've heard about canopy. We've heard, you know, how you're going to increase tree canopy, and that's, that's great. But it seems to be rather rather vague, you know, what are you going to do? What kind of trees and so forth? So I think that perhaps what you've done with the Ad Hoc Tree Committee, it's a useful start. But I think, given the iconic status of the Gary Oak, or at least it should have an iconic status within Lakewood, I think the next thing you need to do is to look at the Gary Oak canopy in Lakewood. The Gary Oak canopy, aside from Fort Silicon Park, you know, the urban canopy of Gary Oaks, and have, actually have goals for the Gary Oak canopy. Now, that's going to be tough, because you're dealing with a tree that is, it takes 150 years to reach maturity. So any goals for Gary Oak, for the Gary Oak canopy before, you know, okay, you could have 200-year goals, but goals within the next century need to be about Gary Oak canopy not reducing. And so if you're going to do that, you need to have some idea of what the coverage of Gary Oaks in Lakewood actually is. And Planet Geo really didn't have a clue. They just looked at canopy in general. And that is going to require some thinking. You're going to have to start to work out how many Gary Oaks are actually in Lakewood, what the canopy is at the moment. And this should allow you to set goals for the future, and those goals are going to be surely no loss of Gary Oaks in Lakewood, and you need to work to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tico Mira Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Tico Mira Dunlop, and I'd like to make a quick comment, of course, about the Gary Oaks. So there's a, there's a lot of things that could be said at this point, but I think, you know, looking at all of the amendments and and things that could be changed with the code and what was talked about by the committee. One of the, one of the, obviously, the large topics is permits. And the thing is that a lot of people have said things about making permits easy and making permits accessible and making permits pain-free and whatever. And the question is, what is a permit for? And a permit is to provide a system to prevent a certain thing from happening when it shouldn't. In this case, oak trees being cut down when they shouldn't be. And this goes for any permit. And the thing is that if you make permits such that anybody who can apply can get them, then there's no point in having any permit at all. Saying that permits are required means nothing if all it is is a bureaucratic loophole, or not loophole, but if it's just a bureaucratic step that people have to step through to cut down a tree, then there's no point in having a permit at all. So I ask that permits should not be easy, and permits should sometimes be denied. And you have to think about, in in most cases, permits should be denied, because looking all over Lakewood, in most cases, almost all cases, when Gary Oaks are cut down, they're not cut down for justifiable reasons. So if you're going to have permits that don't do anything, and if they're always passed, and if they're easy, then you might as well have no permits at all. So I just want to point out that permits shouldn't be just a bureaucratic loop to jump through. They should be something that actually makes sure that the wood stays in Lakewood. So there's other things to be said, but that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dosary Pharmicus.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. So to start off with, Dennis, people call you a racist. We don't call you a racist because we're out of things to say. We call you a racist because you're a racist. And listing the black people that agree with you about something as proof that you're not racist is actually, it's called tokenism, and it's a form of racism.
Mr. Pharmicus, if you could address your comments to the council about city business and provide us your record. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. So as far as the Gary Oaks, I mean, I really want to repeat, like, reiterate what the person before me was saying. If you're just going to grant everyone who asks for a permit, a permit, then what's the point? Right? Again, this is a, this is a gesture. This is trying to throw us a bone to get us to shut up so that you and your donors, frankly, can keep cutting down trees and not have to worry about it, not have to worry about us making a stink, right? I mean, that's what it is. You don't actually care, otherwise you would put real controls in place. And again, you say, oh, it's out of our control. You're not trying. And we know you're not trying. And if you're just completely powerless to stop it, then what's the point of you? What's the point of any of you? What do you do? Right? Sit here and listen to us talk and not do anything? I mean, I guess it's cheaper than going to a therapist, but I mean, what? This is, again, this is a system that is put in place to protect private property and its interests. You are a state entity put in place to protect the interests of private property. It is a, sitting at the crux of corporate and state interests, of corporate and state power, which, again, is the definition of fascism. If there's this idea that people seem to have that innovation and growth in our society comes through a private property, and for that reason it needs to be embraced. Private property, private ownership, private industry did not put a man in space. It did not develop a flu vaccine. You all can go and look very quickly at the very, very, very long list of critical inventions and innovations that were created through, through public funding and public work. So this idea that, you know, things only get done through private property and private investment is nonsense. That's not how anything works. And the only reason this system can even pretend to work is because of because of government authority that enforces it with guns, with the help of their pigs, their murder pigs like Mike Zorro and Mike Wiley. And you should all be ashamed of yourselves, protect the trees, do something, or resign. All power to the people.
Please state your redress. For the record, you're from Pullman, correct, Mr. Pharmicus? Pharmicus?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next is Bunchy Carter.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. Well, my name is Bunchy Carter. We don't need to do all that. I do this all the time. I'm minister of the Facebook Black Panther Party. I think it's very interesting that.
For the record, we're trying to make sure everyone states at least their city of residence, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm a resident of Lakewood. My apologies.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, no problem at all. This cycle that keeps repeating about the Gary Oaks is a bit problematic to me. And it's problematic to me for several reasons, but I'll give you the main reason. The main reason is this. I just saw the exact same thing happen over in our neighboring city of Tacoma. There was a ordinance that was up for a vote, and the overwhelming number of people who were present when that ordinance was voted on did not want it to happen. I mean, the overwhelming majority, like 97% of the people said, nah. But despite the people who went to the ballots, to the box, and put the ballots in and did all the voting, putting these people in their positions, telling them, we don't want you to do this. They did it anyway. Now, there's a very logical reason for that. And without having to try to use too many big words and make it sound all special, they don't care. So the problem that I'm having now is I live in a city, reside in a city, attempt to stand up for and defend a city that doesn't care what the people who voted for them want. That's kind of scary, to be honest with you. Me personally, I firmly believe that, as my comrade Doc Mitchell just a moment ago, the over-exuberant protection of private property and people's personal capitalistic interests serve no purpose to the greater masses of Lakewood. I walk around, drive around, ride around the city all day, every day. And you know what I see? People running around in a maze, trying to find a way out of it. But they're never going to find a way out of the maze, because the reality is, the whole construct of the city and the way this government is set up is specifically to keep them in that maze. So when you think about the Gary Oak trees, let's be honest with ourselves. You already know, in 50 years, most of us who are right now talking on this city council meeting probably won't be around. I mean, I'm hoping, but it's a good chance we won't be. The only problem with that is there are other people who aren't present at this city council meeting who will be, who have breathing issues, who will be getting sun damage to their skin, because the people who are in power right now didn't care enough to do what the people who put them in power wanted them to do. Before I go, Justice Messiah Waki, all power to the people.
Thank you. Next is Aviano X.
Can you hear me?
Not very well, to be honest. Try again.
I'll give you one second. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
All right, I thought I restarted that clock.
No.
Oh, that's kind of rubbish. All right, then I'll keep it short, sweet, to the point. Y'all are despicable. You don't do your job right. You allow killer police to stay on the force. You want to cut down the trees. There is a forest fire going on with smoke in the air. The sky is gray and brown with smoke that the Gary Oak trees would gladly eat for you and clean up your air. But y'all so dense, so uneducated, even though we sit here every week, week after week after week, and tell you how stupid you are, and you allow this rubbish, as I'm trying to watch my words here, because you know what I really want to say, to continue. And then we got clowns like Don Clenderson over there making snide ass remarks. Sorry, I was trying to watch my language.
I would appreciate it. And direct your comments to the council as a whole, please.
All right. For the council as a whole, as allowing this man officially make remarks, and then another clown from another comment and make racist remarks, week after week after week. And you audacity, what was it? What was he like, used? Vigilantes. I still ain't seen my best signal. I'm waiting. I mean, I thought I was a vigilante. He's my failure. Anyway. So there's a beautiful, beautiful holiday coming up in just under two weeks. And I know we have a, as the city likes to call it, a problem with the House of this community. So I invite everybody to go ahead and grab your bags of trash, go ahead and help them get their bags of trash. And we're going to go ahead and allow City Hall to go ahead and take on the trash, since they don't want to help in any kind of way, shape, or form. You know, there's a you know, if y'all put trash cans out there, they wouldn't have it in the yard. So you wouldn't be able to make fun of them. That's all you do. You make fun of people that don't have, and then you take away from those that are trying to have, trying to do for themselves. You're tearing down the trees, Justice Messiah Waki, murderer, scum.
That is the last individual who has signed in to address the council during the virtual public comment period. Are there any other individuals who wish to address the council virtually? If so, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I'll turn to those who are here in person. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I will turn to the in-person sign-in sheet for those who have indicated they wish to address the council. The first is Tamara Cook. indicated they wish to address the council. The first is Tamara Cook.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tamara Cook. I live in Lakewood. Oh, I'm here to talk about the library and of course about privacy issues on the internet and uh, business licenses, to know who I'm dealing with in town and on the internet. Nothing is clear anymore. It's all fuzzy. So basically, I wanted to start with just this. If I live on an island alone, I need no government or laws. I'm government, I'm governed by my mind and necessity. But large, but large groups of people need certain common agreements about how people interact so we have peaceful cohabitation. Excuse me. Driving economies in, in this, in the ecosystem that we reside. I don't have COVID, I'm sorry. Um. So I also want to talk about the library that's closed. When you set up systems that are fallible, that aren't, aren't fair and reasonable, people get hurt. I depend on the library a whole lot. I do not use the internet no more because it's not reliable. My background started in DOS. Okay, we used all kinds of languages out at Hanford to use our equipment. We were all happy when Windows came out. I don't like the way Windows is being used in business. Business right now has too big of a leash. They're not accountable. They're doing things that, that schools aren't allowed to do when it comes to research and things like this. I'm angry about it. Um, I used to work in research also at WSU.
We're trying to, trying to keep comments focused on city business and those things that we can impact.
Basically, business, business in Lakewood here, uh, they don't, they don't, they were, they're not protecting their citizens with the people that are, do come in here and do business with us. There's, there's, there's no accountability. I wish you, but I wish you guys would give me a timeline here. Um. We need some sort of, I, so I'm gonna talk about the library. The library basically, uh, has, does, they're bias. They're, the people that run it, they, they, um, they don't, they don't even put their, their bylaws in a, a format that you can tell whether or not somebody has breached and thrown something in between and made something up. Um.
Thank you.
Ah.
There's always next time. David Zink.
Distinguished members of the Lakewood City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm afraid that the Lakewood City Council is still not tra- treating the oak situation as the emergency that it is. Just a simple permit. The term simple suggests that somebody can just ask for it and you get it. Doesn't mean preventing people from cutting down Gary Oaks or any other trees for that matter. In Lakewood, this still means basically that anytime a property owner wants one, they can cut one, they can cut a tree down. Before, they didn't need a permit. Now, they just need a simple permit. Um, and during, okay, excessive, okay, the some, some Lakewood City Council members worried that during one of the study sessions, that Lakewood would, for heaven forbid, stick out among surrounding community municipalities if their rules regarding the utilities doing whatever they want in terms of removal or pruning were, were regulated. Excessive radical over pruning can be fatal to a tree, causing even more problems down the road. To prevent this, I would humbly suggest that such pruning be supervised by a Washington State University Master Gardener Certified Arborist. Heritage trees. They are making, making a heritage tree program, but the trees owners are the ones that have to give their, agree to the status of heritage. Making a heritage tree, just similar to what a building that's been deemed a historically important building. Hey, if the owner, this doesn't stop the owners from, from raising it to the ground. Is this real protection, folks? A prominent tree cutter on the ad hoc committee boasts that he personally had cut down hundreds of Gary Oaks in the last few years. How much canopy loss was that? Tree canopy will never expand if you allow the big old trees to be cut down constantly. I'm afraid that the amendments are too superficial, folks. They're not offering any better protection in the mature tree canopy. They're symbolic changes. They're simply not good enough. Especially in this era of climate change, carb, oak trees sequester carbon. It's hugely important, folks. Um, in this age of climate, uh, change. And there's no qu- clear statement that Lakewood values and wants to protect these trees in the face of climate change. The, um, will the proposed heritage trees really be protected when property owners can get a reasonable exception? People.
Go ahead, finish.
People can and should, uh, get serious about protecting these oaks. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, uh, Kim Underwood.
Lakewood City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um. I want to address this as all elected officials. Thank you for, uh, letting us voice our concerns regarding our rapidly declining quality of life here in the city of Lakewood. I, like many others in our community, which I've, I live here, um, have lived along riparian area, be it lake, stream, or creek within the la- within the Chambers Clover Creek watershed for over forty years now. Our community has stood shoulder to shoulder, many of whom are here tonight, uh, with members of the Nisqually, P'Alup tribes, and Tacoma Audabahn Society, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Ecology, Department of Fish and Wildlife, and now the EPA. All in an attempt to oppress upon the city of Lakewood the importance of building setbacks, retaining native vegetarian and vegetation in riparian areas, as well as the dangers of building within our water recharge and well and areas. Note the enclosed copy of the nineteen, in the packet, nineteen nineties precedent-setting decision made by Pierce County Hearing Examiner Stephen Cassell Jr. in which it states on AA four, "The final fifty feet, fifty plus feet actually, to the creek shall remain in its natural undisturbed condition, except to remove diseased and dangerous trees, including garbage and debris, which might create a liability for the homeowner." These safeguards were placed within the Ragged Club Estates Division Two to not only protect our water and enhance connectivity for wildlife corridors, but also to protect the homeowner. The city of Lakewood would do well to follow examples like this. Unfortunately, under city authority, additional homes have been built within this exact floodplain without the protection of flood mitigation. And you can look at map, the map that I enclosed, closed, uh. This was a preempted map. You guys, we were not incorporated at this time. This was paired, uh, pulled from the Pierce County website. Um, the flood mitigation meeting that we had gone to states that, um, this flood area was not, was omitted. However, this map dates way back and was obviously not. Also enclosed within the packet, you'll find timestamp photos of PFAS spills within Clover Creek dated nineteen ninety-two, well as stamped literature from Lakewood Water District, which states, "In twenty six, in twenty sixteen, the first detected PFAS in some groundwater wells after being notified of potential contaminants from firefighting foam used as JPLM. For over a decade, Lakewood residents have consumed PFAS-contaminated water."
Thank you, ma'am. I think we're, we've hit our time there. But you're welcome to submit written comments, uh, before the next, uh, period. You can always email your written comments to us and we can receive those.
Thank you.
Next, Bernadette Smith. You're welcome to if you'd like, but you don't have to. I just have you down with the yes there, but you're fine if you don't want to. Hedging your bet. All right, I get it. Uh, there are a few others who have signed in but have, uh, definite noes circled that they don't wish to address the council tonight. But, uh, if there are any others other than Alicia Ryan, who's the last on the signup sheet to address council, anyone else, they can certainly line up, uh, behind Ms. Ryan and, uh, address council during the public comment period. And if you reconsider, you're alw- you're always welcome if you reconsider. I'll give you the chance.
Good I do. Uh, thank you for having me today. My name is Alicia Ryan. I'm the Regional Services Manager for the Lakewood, um, Pierce County Library. So I'm glad to be here today to give a few updates on the library and talk about some of our services and programs that we're doing in the city. So we've been busy planning a lot of new things in the city since the library has closed. Um, we were at Truck and Tractor Day just a couple of weeks ago and talked to over eight hundred people. It was wonderful. And you may not know, but we're doing a storytime in this room every Tuesday morning at ten thirty. And you might not think, but this is a super fun place for preschoolers and toddlers to run around and get their wiggles out because there's so many chairs, so many rows. And if they sneak past up here, it's really loud to stop. So it's been, um, a lot of fun and we're really grateful to the city for opening up this space for us to do storytimes on a weekly basis. Um, another really, um, positive thing that we just started a book club at the Lakewood History Museum. They've been a great partner with us in getting the word out. And, um, we had a, a great first meeting, um, the first, uh, Friday of the month. So we'll be doing that throughout the winter. And we have the calendar of Lakewood events that was translated as was suggested here. Um, and we'll have copies of, uh, that at all of our events, including our storytimes and our pop-ups in Lakewood City Hall that we do every Thursday. Temporary fencing is being installed on the property starting this Wednesday, October nineteenth, uh, following city directives and securing the building. So we're, um, doing that work soon. Work on, we're working on staffing to expand our hours at the Telecom branch this fall. And we do still have that branch that's open and, um, providing all of our wonderful services in the city of Lakewood. Um, interim library plans are underway. The location will not be disclosed until the ink is dry on all of our leases and financial transactions, but we're preparing to go to the city building department for a pre-application meeting very soon. Um, our goal is to have a full-service facility open in downtown Lakewood as soon as we possibly can. And the next, uh, Community Advisory Committee meeting is October twenty-sixth. And we're looking forward to hearing their recommendation, um, to the joint meeting between the city council and our library board coming up, uh, on November seventeenth, so just a month away. So, um, we're glad to still be working in the city of Lakewood and, um, are looking forward to getting that temporary location open as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, that is the last individual who has signed up to address council, at least on the sign-in sheet. But as I've indicated, if you're in the audience and you wish to address council, you didn't get a chance to, or you thought differently, you're welcome to address council during this public comment session. So going once, as we say, going twice. Any further folks who wish to address the council? If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. Thank you. We next turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October third, twenty twenty-two. C, motion number twenty twenty-two dash seventy-nine, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce to implement the City Energy and Climate Change Comprehensive Plan Chapter. D, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce to, to develop middle housing policies and regulations. E, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-one, authorizing the execution of an agreement with ABDA and Associates in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents for right-of-way acquisition services related to the Silicon Boulevard Southwest, eighty-seventh to Weller Project. F, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-two, authorizing the increase in contract authorization for the construction of the Phillips Road Southwest Sidewalk Project. G, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-three, accepting the Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of forty-one thousand for ballistic helmets and rifle plates. H, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-four, reappointing Jarnell Singh to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-five, reappointing Susan Warner to serve on the Lakewood Arts Commission through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. J, motion number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-six, appointing Denise Nicole Franklin to serve on the Community Service Advisory Board through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. K, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Arts Commission meeting minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-two. Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Three, Arts Commission meeting minutes of April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Four, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Five, Arts Commission meeting minutes of May second, twenty twenty-two. Six, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Seven, Arts Commission meeting minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Eight, Community Services Advisory Board meeting minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Nine, Arts Commission meeting minutes of August first, twenty twenty-two. Ten, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of September first, twenty twenty-two. Eleven, Arts Commission meeting minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And twelve, Planning Commission meeting minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Are there any items which any member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstad or seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? My only point is to encourage our folks on the Arts Commission to perhaps expedite the completion of their meeting minutes because it's several months in arrears. It may have been a, a gap in staff opportunity, but that would be my only comment there, other than there's lots of significant work that's being done. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. Ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven seventy-five, amending the Lakewood Critical Areas Regulations located in Lakewood Municipal Code Title fourteen, Lakewood Municipal Code Chapter two point four eight, and the Lakewood Municipal Code Sections eighteen A sixty, zero three zero through zero seven zero, eighteen A sixty one ten, eighteen A seventy one forty, eighteen A seventy three hundred through three fifty, eighteen A eighty zero six zero, eighteen B two hundred two thirty, eighteen B six hundred, eighteen B seven hundred seven twenty, eighteen C two hundred two thirty, eighteen C six hundred, and eighteen C seven hundred seven twenty related to the tree preservation code.
Thank you very much, and I will call on our long-range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear to provide us with an overview. But before she does that, I just want to, uh, provide an overview myself briefly about the nature of the public comments tonight and certainly the public comments we've heard throughout this process. I just want to assure folks, at least from my humble perspective, that we would not collectively and individually have gone through this long, very significant process if we didn't care. We do care. And while we all may, as community members, have differences of opinion, I can tell you that we have heard all opinions and we have an obligation to listen to all opinions, but to, to perform our legislative authority, uh, as council members and to do what we think is in the best interest of all members of the community. So I just want to assure folks that we do care. Uh, staff cares. We have spent an inordinate amount of time, which has been good time spent, uh, with committee meetings, public hearings, studies. uh with committee meetings, public hearings, study sessions, a review of a significant written comment and certainly oral comment. And so we come to this point uh which may end up having a little bit more uh time for consideration, but we come to this point as concerned and interested members of your community, elected members, yes, but interested and concerned members who do care. So Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I, first of all, once again, we'll, we'll make the apology that we did a week ago, which is Courtney Brunel, who ran this from the staff's perspective for the last year, is no longer with us. So I and uh Mr. Buhr are doing the best we can to fill her shoes on the issue. We do also have this evening, should you have questions, we can't answer both Alex Hancock from Planet Geo and Lisa Gruder from Burke Associates or Burke Consulting here to answer questions. To summarize very quickly, the legislative history of this project, December twentieth of twenty twenty-one is when the city council adopted Resolution twenty twenty-one fifteen to form the Ad hoc Committee. It did meet seven different times in March and April of this year. The Planning Commission then also met and discussed the issues as recommended by the Ad hoc Committee in May, June, and July. And then beginning on August sixth, the city council has held six, and this is the seventh meeting where this uh topic has been discussed. There were three items that were discussed last week at the study session, so just to reflect how those have been now incorporated into proposed ordinance seven seventy-five. The issues were regarding utility tree maintenance and pruning. And those have been uh incorporated into several sections of both Title fourteen and eighteen A. There was discussion also about significant tree and its uh their replacement ratios. Those are discussed at eighteen A seventy-three twenty. And then the discussion of the effective date of the ordinance and the consensus of the council last week was that that could be set at February fifteenth of next year in order to allow, first of all, the council to set the fee schedule to implement uh this new ordinance as well as allow for public uh notification of the rules changes that would be going into effect. One last item, just sort of a housekeeping one, is that you have seen definitions and they aren't proposed to be changed tonight, but they have been moved just to be consistent with the rest of Title eighteen A into the section that is strictly for definitions that apply within that title. So regarding utility tree maintenance and pruning, um there is now an addition of several spots in the code that says they must comply with uh U.S. Department of Agriculture's publication regarding how to prune trees as well as the International Society of Arbor- Arboric Cultures Best Management Practices, their latest version. So that's been incorporated in several spots. And there's also, just to clarify, um what you see on the second half of this slide is the specific requirement for a permit from utilities has been removed, but notification is still required anytime they are to be doing work on trees. The second issue is-
Can I ask a question on that? Go back to that last slide real quick. So with regard to the um standard for pruning of trees, I understand it's in the context of utility pruning. But wouldn't the International Society of Arbor Culturists Best Management Practices utility pruning of trees also be applicable to any other pruning or just utility pruning?
That is a document and set of best practices that are specifically geared toward utilities.
Okay.
Um, and the way it's been incorporated into the code is that is who it would apply to working in the city.
Thank you.
Sure. The second item is significant tree replacement ratio. And as was discussed last week, this is just clarifying once more that within eighteen A seventy-three twenty subsection I, one, B, and C, you now see that language uh that is added saying that the replacement ratio is no less than one to one for all replacement trees to the diameter inches of all the significant trees removed. And then that third item that I mentioned is the effective date, and then the definitions have been relocated.
So back a slide, go back a slide. So the intent of I, one, B is to sustain uh and certainly not decrease the canopy coverage with regard to removal, but the mitigation would hopefully enhance or sustain. And then the other aspects of the code would be to enhance and grow.
Correct. This is saying that the absolute minimum is one to one, but if you were to read the entire section here that's being referred to, there is other language that would be encouraging a higher replacement ratio.
Thank you. Mr. Branstad has a question.
Yes, thank, thank you, Ms. Spear, and I I do agree with the revised language regarding onsite replacement. And I just wanted to clarify that if someone was not going to replace the trees onsite, they would still then have to deal with or fund the two-to-one ratio diameter.
Okay, yes, that's true. Yes.
Right, thank you.
So if there are no other questions right now, the next steps would be adoption by council, whether that be tonight or some other date. Uh, and then once that is adopted, it'll be a matter of the city council adopting a fee schedule, that it'll be part of the master fee schedule before you as part of budget. And then also the public notification. And for sure, this is going to be large in scale and wide in um in reach for residents, businesses, uh companies that specifically deal with tree removal or maintenance as well as developers that are active in the city. And then we will also just internally be providing uh development of those forms that are needed to administer the program and also making sure all of our staff are well-versed before the effective date. I would just also like to thank both Planet Geo and Burke for their work on this. This has been uh a heavy lift, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
A lot of time and effort, and thank you for your pitch hitting, stepping in from Ms. Brunel, who spent a lot of staff time on this as well as Mr. Buhr. Ju- just a quick question on a Scrivener error on page one thirty-one of the packet, which is the various recitals that embody the legislative background. The one that discusses, I'm just trying to make sure that things are clean. It's page one thirty-one. It starts, whereas on June fifteenth, the Planning Commission set a public hearing date of July sixth, twenty twenty-two. And then to whereas is down, it states the Planning Commission held the open public, record public hearing on July five, twenty twenty-two. I assume we got to have the right consistent date, either July five or July six.
It would be whichever would have been the Wednesday of that week. Apologies for the confusion.
Yeah, no problem. No confusion. I just want to make sure we have things that are as is uh consistent and clean as we can, right?
And that'll be corrected before signature.
So you say that would have been the Wednesday?
The Wednesday of that week, yes.
Yeah, so it looks like that would have been the fifth, or sixth, excuse me. So we'll change that to the fifth, sixth? Yeah. Okay, I I will have some questions, but before I address my questions, are there any members of council who have questions from Ms. Spear or Mr. Buhr? So I have a question for uh Mr. Buhr with regard to the intent, because I see in a couple of places uh the issue of trimming of of Gary Oaks. For example, in fourteen, one fifty-four, oh eight oh, sub C two, which is page one thirty-five of our packet. And, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of information about uh the definitions of malicious uh trimming uh harm to Gary Oaks, those kinds of things. But I want to be clear in this code about residential homeowner trimming when it's allowed or when it requires a permit, because this language in C two refers to trimming shall be granted when it's determined that it's needed for public uh for safety or public welfare to remove disease or dead branches, which is implying that a permit would be required in any case for a residential homeowner to do some maintenance pruning. Is that the intent and is that consistent throughout the code?
Mr. Mayor, if I could give it a stab and then Mr. Buhr will come in and correct me if I'm incorrect. Um, if you were to look at Title fourteen, Chapter one fifty-four, that is related specifically to critical areas. And so that is a minority of where these trees are going to be located in the city.
Okay.
As you read subsection C, it says the following activities may be permitted regarding uh Oregon White Oak trees and woodlands, and then trimming shall be granted when it is determined. So in this case, under the Critical Areas Ordinance and where that applies in the city, there would be a permit required.
Got it.
The city needs to look at it and say yes.
Okay.
However, if you were to go to Title eighteen A, which is the citywide land use development code under Chapter seventy, Section three twenty, sub B.
Which, which page, if you can get it?
I'm sorry, I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, I know it's challenging. There's a lot of pages here. No, you're fine.
Okay, I'm I'm getting there.
Yep. I think it was one fifty-one or one fifty-two that I had a question about on the same issue.
Okay. That's, uh, I believe we're at about page one fifty, I'm sorry, one forty-five.
Okay.
Where you'll see sub B, and then you'll see some language in in uh color, but that's related specifically to utilities. I'm referring to the section that's just in black text. And that is saying that uh trimming of li- of tree limbs and branches for purposes of vegetation management is permitted, providing it does not cause the tree to be a safety hazard. So what this is saying is that outside of the critical areas, otherwise on residential lots, these tree trimming activities are allowed. And then it's just the, the caution there is it's not causing the tree to become a safety hazard. So a permit is not explicitly required is, um, that's the rule to go by uh for, if you're outside of a critical area.
So I guess my question to the group is, you know, based on the comment we've heard, is that enough? Because we understand we don't want the tree to be a safety hazard, but we also don't want to undo uh damage to the tree to the point that it becomes unsustainable.
Ms. Spear did a good job trying to explain this, but I would like to add a few points for the council to see from an overview.
Certainly.
You're looking at three things here. You're looking at the shoreline act. You're looking at the critical areas. You're looking at the city zoning code. So we're dealing with basically a puzzle piece, a puzzle with a thousand pieces where we're trying to do this.
Right.
So when we get into situations where we're having critical areas, which would be at the floodplain, for example.
Right.
Or if we're into a buffer area on a shoreline, or we have a piece of property with lots of of Gary Oak on them, then you could be in a critical area and or shoreline, buffer area and or both.
Right, okay.
That's when fourteen begins to play into this whole equation.
Got it.
If you're not in those areas, then you're going to be subject to eighteen A.
But to address my last point on that in terms of the standard for residential trimming without a permit, are we providing enough teeth in it uh to ensure not only that the trimming doesn't cause the tree to be a safety hazard, but the trimming doesn't cause the tree to be uh emasculated or whatever you want to call, you know, to the point where it, it suffers and is unhealthy as a result of the, shall we say, aggressive trimming?
There is other sections of the code, and I'm sorry, I can't cite them to you right here, but that do mention any intentional damage to a tree is explicitly prohibited. And so this is um us covering the situation where someone is simply maintaining that tree
Got it.
for their own um well-being, for the tree's well-being, for the property owner, next door's well-being, et cetera.
Is there, is there some reason why we shouldn't include some language in there, Mr. Buhr, that the pruning should be done pursuant to a particular standard or done by a qualified professional?
We could add that if that is something that the council wants, but I would also like to point out something that may not be that familiar with. If you go to Significant Tree Preservation, eighteen A seventy-three twenty.
Three, and let's get there, three twenty.
Page one forty-four and page one forty-five.
Okay.
That's existing language. And if you go to one forty-five, pruning, that's existing language.
Let me, let me get there. One forty-five.
Part C.
Preservation criteria.
Your code already says to the degree of pruning that's already allowed. And if I can read it, remove limbs from the trees, such as removing dead or broken branches, or by reducing branch and weights. If needed, remove up to one quarter of the branches from the canopy and maintain trunk only in small amounts unless greater pruning is needed
Got it.
by approved by an arborist. So I think you're there.
I think we're there. Okay, that does help me. Thank you. That does help me. Okay. Okay, Mr. Branstad, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just to sort of follow up on your questions of where there is a I think I, your, your intent is to avoid confusion or ambiguity. Um, and so I, I would say that perhaps as we look at this, the, you know, the, the problem is the use of the word permit and requires a permit and the use of the word permitted. Um, that, 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 you know, there is a you know, you know, that is, is permitted, include requiring a permit or is permitted, in your words, actually mean uh, uh, will be allowed. Um, that, uh, so that I think that there is a sort of looking at the semantics of that to do that. In the public comment today, we heard some references to permitting that uh that I really thought didn't really reflect the current text, because we are moving from a situation with tree permits of where they were, they were free and were quite frankly automatic. Okay, to be able to do, it was just a question to uh, uh, ha- ha- have done it. And the ordinance is set up to have a permitting system that um is actually going to require a review of why is the tree being removed? Okay, uh, is it, is it, is it reasonable and are there other alternatives and creates a dialogue with a, a person requesting it? And, and in addition, uh, the previous permit threshold frequently didn't require any effort to replace trees that were lost, and we've now moved to a thing of where permits will also trigger a replacement responsibility on the part of folks to do that. So I, uh, um, yeah, I, 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 I think though, but clearing up the, any confusion where it might exist between requires a permit and permitted uh would be a, a, a good thing. Um, and I'm not sure that we want to try to do that here in the next ten minutes. Uh, I, you know, I, I'd rather it be done in a in a, in a, in a methodical way uh with, with a recommended by staff of terms of looking at it through that lens.
And I think that's probably a good idea. There are just a few instances where that cleanup language would be effective to address the potential confusion by the, the community at large. So maybe we can take a little bit of time to do that and not put a rush on you to think through and go through every page of the significant document tonight. But perhaps we could have you come back to council and just redline those uh finite changes for review and consideration at the next meeting, which would be November seven, I believe, is the next regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, to that end, uh, I would move that we continue consideration of ordinance seven seven five to November seventh, twenty twenty-two at the regular meeting at being a date definite.
I have a motion from Mr. Branstad to continue consideration of ordinance seven seven five for the finite discussion points heard tonight. Do I have a second? It's been moved by Councilmember Branstad or seconded by Councilmember Farmer that we uh continue consideration of ordinance seven seven five to a date certain, that being November seven, twenty twenty-two, the next regular city council meeting. Is there any further discussion? Any further guidance to staff so that we have one final integrated document? Uh, then I also point out that that will be a time when I believe all seven council members will be present. And that will be a good thing for this consideration. So all those in favor of the motion to continue ordinance seven seven five's consideration to a date certain, November seven, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ordinance is continued to November seven, twenty twenty-two. We now turn to ordinance seven seven six. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven seventy-six, adopting a three-year energy and climate change work plan.
And for this, we have our Assistant City Manager for Development Services, Mr. David Buhr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance seven seven six, if approved, would establish again a three-year climate change work plan for the city. There are fifteen work plan items proposed, one of which was added by the city council at your last- There are 15 work plan items proposed, one of which was added by the city council at your last study session. That added item was to establish an urban forestry management program and has been included in the draft ordinance. Would like to point out to the council that this program, just like tree preservation, has gone through extensive review by both council and planning commission. In total, I have counted 10 meetings before the planning commission, as well as the city council this meeting tonight, five meetings. I can go through the dates, but basically we started in 2021, and here we are towards the end of 2022. Some examples of the work plan items, I won't go through all 15. I'm just going to mention eight. Establish and update the climate change comp plan policies. You've already done that as a part of the periodic update, you'll probably review it again. Revised the non-motorized transportation plan. Funds have been set aside and that program is underway. The Clover Creek flood analysis, you will get an update from the Public Works and Engineering Director this evening. Revised tree preservation code was not taken action tonight, but soon to be, I would imagine, be approved by the council in some form. Five, to develop a regional approach to address climate change that's going on at various fronts through the Puget Sound Regional Council, the Pierce County Regional Council, and then at the administrative level between the cities in Pierce County. Next is the urban forestry program. We plan to propose a work plan with specific details on how to carry that out by May or June of 2023. Reducing the city hall footprint, you've already paid for that. And we have drawings being prepared, and that's coming back to the council fairly soon. And the last one is we've done energy building code updates, and I expect that you will see some more in the future year. Overall, the 15 work plans are reasonable. Many of these already reflect current city council goals and policies and are, for the most part, are actually all budgeted. So with that, I return my comments back to the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Buhr. Are there any questions of Mr. Buhr before we turn to consideration of ordinance 776? Mr. Buhr, it's a significant bite at a very large apple. And I understand from the planning commission's good work on this that they believe that these are not only significant but achievable. And as you've indicated, the steps that require a fiscal note are budgeted for.
Including a $95 million improvement to the I-5 corridor to address Nisqually floodplain issues. That's a major accomplishment of the South Sound Military Communities partnership. With more to come on that.
Well, I think we can be proud collectively of your fine staff work and good public input through the planning commission and the public hearing process. And I think that this is a great step in the right direction. Is there any further questions of Mr. Buhr? If not, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 776?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Always need a second, yeah, I do, yeah. It's been moved by council member Bell and second of my council member Farmer that we adopt ordinance 776 as presented. Is there any further, further discussion? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm certainly in favor of, of the ordinance. I think it's a culmination of a significant body of work. And I also think that it looks at the community concern around climate change and a commitment of many in the community, but particularly by the city, to address it in multiple ways. Because it's a, that, it's a complex, you know, problem. And while it's got some, some elements that relate to carbon sequestration and some, 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 some elements that, that relate to, you know, electric utilities. And it has some planning elements in it that cause us to keep an eye on this in terms of periodic reviews and developing a plan to be able to implement it, to be able to go forward and, and do that. I think that we, and it also looks at some internal actions that the city can take to be the example to say, you know, don't just do what we say, but do, do what we do. And I think that will be, that, that, that's a really good step to go forward to do that. In the, in the area of where we're, we're, we're looking to do some planning, I think in the future down the road, you know, much of the work around this, getting us to this point, is done by the planning commission. But I think that in 2023, as some of this planning comes to bear, this is going to be an ongoing heavy lift. And I'm thinking that we should consider whether or not we need a specialized advisory group with people with expertise around the area of climate change to, to advise us in this work in the future years. And I would look forward in, in the new year to considering whether that would be advisable and be admissible both to the council and to the staff and to the community to, to have such an advisory group for consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Any further questions, comments? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 776 as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance 776 has been adopted, thank you. That concludes our ordinance portion of tonight's regular agenda. We now turn to unfinished business, Mr. Coffield.
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business to bring forth to the council?
Not this evening, Mayor.
So then we turn to reports by the city manager from Mr. Coffield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, good evening, council members. I'd like to start off with two updates. The first is from our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic. Give you an update on the Clover Creek evaluation analysis, engineering alternatives analysis that his department is undertaking with a wide range of local and regional stakeholders. Followed by an update from our prosecutor, Samantha Johnson. Like to give you an update of prosecution services through year-to-date for 2022. So with that, Mr. Bucic, followed by Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Waylon, Deputy Mayor Moss, Member of City Council. Earlier this year, we initiated an evaluation of the flooding proposed or projected to occur from Clover Creek around the Spring Brook area. Our purpose was to ascertain whether there was an engineering solution to the extreme degree of flooding that our modeling has indicated that we have. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief update on that. And I'd like to start off by talking to you about the engagement and involvement we've done with very specific stakeholders. These are representatives of state agencies, Fish and Wildlife, Department of Ecology, Washington State Department of Transportation. Then local agencies such as Pierce County Surface Water Management, Pierce County Flood Control Zone District, Sound Transit, and Pierce Transit, the P'leb Tribe, and Nisqually Indian Tribe, to name, I think I named all of them. I may have missed one or two. The reason why we convened this specific group was because these are entities that have, they have sway in any alternative that we come up with. Either that they have sway because we'll be looking to them to help us fund a solution. They have sway because they are a sovereign nation and can basically effectively stop any proposal moving forward. And they have sway because they have an active interest in solving the problem and/or regulatory authority over any proposed solution moving forward. We started in March with stakeholder meetings by getting individuals up to speed on what the problem is and convincing them that it actually is a problem. It is a future problem. It is a future problem that could occur tomorrow, November of some year, December of some year. And it could happen more than once over the course of a year. It's a 1% probability flood. It's not a 1% storm, it's 1% probability flood. The water we receive comes from upstream, comes from unincorporated Pierce County. Some of it comes from JBLM, some of it comes a limited amount from the city of Lakewood proper. We've had four different meetings from the stakeholders. We had one community meeting, which we sent out over close to 700 mailers, flyers to businesses and residents to let them know of the nature of the work we are doing and why we are doing it. We had 13 attendees, not 13 households, 13 attendees. We almost outnumbered them, but they were very engaged and appreciative of the work we are doing. And we'll be doing a similar outreach in November, I'll get to that in a moment. In April, May, we worked up a series of alternatives, discussed that with the stakeholder group in April. Worked through the concept analysis, did some scoring, did a business case evaluation. In other words, what that means is, so how much is this going to cost us? And how much will it save us as a community? In other words, if it's going to cost us $200 million, but the impact of the flooding is actually $50 million, then the business case needs to be made, and it's not just numbers, but it's also human impact and social impact. In a minute, I'm going to walk you through, and you're going to see that, I think that the business case we're doing something is pretty, pretty stark. It's pretty self-evident unto itself. We are currently working on and working through the funding alternatives and framework. And then the final will be the engineering report, which I anticipate bringing to the council around the first of the year in January. As a reminder, our modeling shows that if we do nothing, the extents of the 100-year or 1% probability flood are quite extensive. This is much bigger than what FEMA had mapped. I won't go into the details on why, but council has been briefed on that, community has been briefed on that. We are very confident on the outcome of our modeling. So doing nothing shows that I-5, major transportation corridors in the city of Lakewood, as well as a lot of vacant and built land, will be inundated in some fashion. We looked at a series of different alternatives, a setback levy, a bypass pipe, a, working with the Department of Transportation, ditch blockage or flood wall along I-5, potentially raising the profile of I-5. Can we do something only in the creek by doing creek restoration capacity enhancements? Can we just fill low areas along Clover Creek? And then the last one is a creekside levy. There was an eighth one, and I'm showing it to you because what it was, was work with upstream municipal entities, AKA Pierce County, to come up with a long-term solution to reduce the amount of water coming down to us. One of our criterion was it has to be reasonable, has to be feasible, has to be something we can do within our lifetimes. There's a significant amount of developed land. It's unlikely that Pierce County or any entity can go in and retrofit all that, keep that water from coming down to the city of Lakewood. So within a reasonable timeframe, we determined that that just didn't make sense. That doesn't mean we don't continue to work with them so the problem doesn't get exacerbated. That doesn't mean that we don't continue to work with them to encourage them to do actions upstream. But the reality of it is, that will not solve our problem in any kind of a reasonable timeframe. We went through an extensive prioritization process. I am not going to make you go through each one of these criterion with me, but I just want you to know that there was an extensive amount of criteria we looked at. And we looked at the relative benefit scores, came up with basically three alternatives that we would pursue further through the engineering evaluation. Some form of a setback levy or creekside levy, a ditch blockage or flood wall along I-5, raise the profile of I-5. Raising the profile of I-5 realistically is not, not likely going to happen. It's going to be very costly. So that part of it kind of went by the wayside, but it was part of our evaluation. And then what can we do within the existing confines of the creek? We know that there are some areas where the creek banks are low and then the water spills out. Can we just do, can we do bank work? Can we go in there and lower the creek bed? Can we remove some of those concrete weirs that are in there? They're, have fish ladders in them, but really need to be taken out long-term for the health of the stream? What would all that do for us? And what we determined, this is the levy, and now I will caution you and everybody watching this is, the location of the levy has not been set. So if you're looking at this and say, oh my gosh, that runs right through my apartment complex, or that's running down this street or that street, that is not the location. That'll be in the next phase of work, shall we move forward with it? What this is showing is that if we were to build a levy that meets FEMA requirements, we would actually take everything you see in that magenta color, and it would be essentially removed out of the floodplain. Okay? There's a little bit of yellow you see smattered along the creek. Those are areas that would see increased flooding come through there. Those are not unmanageable, they can be addressed. The second alternative we looked at was what if we, AKA State Department of Transportation, said we're only going to protect the freeway? So we're going to pull a levy right along I-5, what would that do for us? And it would effectively protect the freeway, but it would not protect the rest of the city lands. Those developed lands and undeveloped, yet to be developed lands would not be protected. We wanted to know what that would do and what that would cost. And the third alternative was what can we do strictly within the creek itself? It's not bad, it's almost equivalent to the I-5 levy, but there's still a significant amount of land that would remain within the floodplain. But a lot of the built land, the freeway, hack highway, Bridgeport, our major transportation corridors, would be protected. Some of the criterion we were looking at as a part of this was the water quality. What are we going to do? Is, can we do something that can improve water quality and habitat? What about the greater community improvements? What about DEI? What about flood reduction benefits? How about ease of operation? Because whatever we build, we're going to have to maintain. And if something is very expensive, not just to build but to maintain, and if something else is less, it'd be more favorable. And is it shovel-ready? There are going to be federal funds that we're going to go pursue. How fast can we get this alternative shovel-ready? Is it something that we can do right now, we can do in six months, et cetera? What we determined, when you look at it from this perspective, the do-nothing alternative, it's cheap. It's easily implemented because we don't need to do anything, however, it really has no benefit other than it's cheap, we don't have to do anything right now. The levy, I-5 blockage, and channel of floodplain enhancements, they have varying degrees of what we determined to be high, medium, and low. So where are we sitting on costs? The levy alternative, this is a minus 20%, plus 50%, because it's a planning level cost estimate, is estimated to range between $16.5 and $25 million. Might go a little bit higher as we get more into it, might go a little bit lower. The I-5 alternative, strictly for protecting I-5, is the way I view that, 14.5 million to 22 million. So you know what, in my perspective, if the DOT is going to protect I-5 for this amount of money, we might as well take that money, add a few more million dollars to it, and solve the problem. That's, that's kind of the strategy, why we looked at that. Because if the Department of Transportation is only interested in protecting I-5, let's work together and come up with a better solution that solves it for all of us. The channel enhancement alternative, which gives us about the same degree of effectiveness as the I-5 alternative, a little more expensive, 17.5 to 26. But here's, here's the rub. This is why I say the business case evaluation shows that it's worth doing a project out here. We've estimated that the impacts of doing nothing and having that flooding impacting all the homes, the businesses, loss in revenue, the impacts on transportation is approximately $90 million. If we do the levy alternative, there's still a little piece of land in there that would be behind the levy, so we're estimating that about almost $3 million of impact. Same for the I-5 alternative. However, I will tell you, the I-5 alternative, under this assessment, 2.9 million, doesn't fully capture lost opportunity costs. We've started working on that, and right now, we're about $30 million of lost opportunity costs. What that means is land that could be developed to its maximum potential cannot right now because it's in the floodplain. That means the sales tax revenue, the jobs that we're going to miss out on, that means the annual revenue from, from what comes in from the business to the city, all that's going to be unavailable to us. So yes, under current conditions, the cost of doing the levy alternative and the I-5 alternative, not much difference between the two because the land's vacant, most of it's vacant. But we're going to have to look at, also, we want to think about But we're going to have to look at also, we want to think about what about what we want to see and vision for this area here? What's the lost opportunity? And there's a lot of different ways to look at that. That's why we're still working on it. On a channel enhancement alternative, pretty close to I five alternative, same comment. We're losing a bunch of opportunity to develop this land in the way we would like to see it move forward. Right now, the levy alternative has risen to the top as a primary and most likely alternative that meets our criterion and the objectives set forth. If we go forward with that, there will be a need to do improvements to the stream habitat in and overall environmental uplift. Because more water will flow down the channel at a higher rate during these larger events. So we will be required and encouraged to do some mitigation in there, which frankly, the stream could benefit from that. Some of those structures I mentioned earlier would benefit from removal and putting in a boulder cobble riffle so the fish can move through that without having to be picked up or and or having to have someone go out there and clear the fish ladders on a daily basis during the fall time. We have an opportunity to provide parks and green spaces um as along the corridor. We have a parcel right, right across the creek from the developed um parkland that we would like to do more with it, and this can be a part of that, and that is part of our offset on doing mitigation. And there's also an opportunity to look for stormwater treatment to enhance the local water quality. By doing this, that also gives us credit with the regulatory agencies and the tribal interests. Now, no one at this stakeholder group can sit there and tell us, yes, if you do this, we will guarantee you get a permit. It's not our purpose for having this group together. Our purpose was to hear from them if they saw fatal flaws of what we were proposing. Our purpose was also to inform them of the problem. And make sure that we weren't going to go down the wrong path. Or that when this comes forward to them, they can say, oh, yeah, I remember that, and I talked to the habitat biologist from Fish and Wildlife. He's familiar with this project you've got going on. So our next steps, we're going to have our next community meeting scheduled on November tenth. And individual stakeholder meetings as needed. We will um continue to refine these alternatives based on stakeholder community feedback. And then finalize our engineering report and come back to you in the first part of next year in the January timeframe. As soon as we know how the community is reactive and their thoughts and opinions on this. Thank you, and right now I'm open to any questions.
Very good. I I have one before I turn it over. If you go back a couple of slides real quick.
I will certainly try. Tell me when to stop.
Forward one.
Oh, forward one?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Talking about improvements, uh environmental uplift, you know, we we've spent a lot of time tonight talking about the tree preservation code and the potential urban forestry program as part of the climate change. I I asked the question about whether or not we should include in addition to consideration of parks and green spaces, maybe the incentivization of planting of of trees in these certain areas to mitigate the impacts of flood or those kinds of erosion that come with flooding. Is that something that should be considered or added to the mix as part of the urban forestry program?
Right now, the type of flooding that occurs is not, will not cause erosion because it's, it's like this creeping wall of water slowly comes across, it slowly fills up. It's not like you would see along the Puyallup River and the Squally River. We have a big flood come through and it starts wiping out the levees and the banks. Um, definitely an opportunity for us to come in in front of the levy. If we need to acquire some area in there to reforest it, make it part of the green space that I was speaking to a few minutes ago. Whatever we do downstream in cooperation with the property owners, part of it will be revegetation of banks. Especially if there are, I don't know there are a lot of them, but if there are lawns that go right up to the edge of the water, lawns are the absolute worst habitat possible. Um, so those will be areas we'd be looking to enhance.
Great, okay. Any additional questions, Mr. Brandsetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bucic, uh, thanks, thanks for the update. I uh could you back up the slide to the one that talked about uh advantages, disadvantages, uh, this one here? That uh remind me again what does high mean? Does that mean it's there, there's, there's real, the, 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 there are ben- benefits?
There are benefits in relation to what is out there in the field today. All this is related to the do-nothing essentially. So if the levy, community improvement, greater community, we view that as high because of the opportunities to have the setback levy and create the green space, create the the parks and the habitat um with that alternative. Um, the one we struggled the most with is with the community improvement DEI. Because frankly, this entire project, the entire community on DEI is going to see improvements because we're going to stop flooding. So, and it's going to vary depending upon where the alternative is constructed.
So with the I five blockage, for instance, uh, or the levy to the costs there, they include essentially buying what is the equivalent of right-of-way for places to put the levy, or is the levy going to be either on land already owned by Wash Dot or by the city?
So the question is whether the cost estimates we have pulled together include actual acquisition of land. The answer is yes. The other part of that is on the DOT um I five blockage, which is basically another levy. We looked at that and goodly amount of that can be built within the DOT right away, but then it has to come out of the DOT right away. So that would require acquisition of land.
So in the short term, as we start to see requests to do development along I five and on parcels that are adjacent to I five, we'd need to have, to know what we are so that people who are going to do development would know what we're thinking. Uh, and or at the time of it, getting them to pass on uh either, either an easement for, 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 for a levy or that to do that. Is that how that would work? Before someone builds, builds something on a, on a parcel, and I'm thinking like the county-owned parcels that are uh up against I five, but also against the railroad.
One of the challenges we're faced right now is we don't have a location certain for the setback levy. We've been very specific about that because that would be in the next body of work to identify the best location. We've got some ideas. But I also don't want to presuppose exactly where it is based on the engineering that we have today. We need to do, we need to do some more survey work. We need to do some real property assessments. We need to determine if we can get around all the different structures um before we can say, yes, this is where it's going to be. Now, every developer who comes forward in this area that we, since the time I've been here, um, we have been sharing with them what we're doing. We shared with them the outcome of the flooding modeling. And they are regulated under the current flood model. It doesn't affect them a great deal because their property already has flooding. Some of it has less flooding, some of it has a little bit more, but essentially it's already so impacting to those properties. It's not really affecting them with the new analysis. The new analysis affects primarily I five and everything north and west of I five. That is now in the, in the hundred-year floodplain. Those are the folks that, once this goes to FEMA and gets approved by FEMA, all those properties now are designated officially in the hundred-year floodplain. And depending upon the relationship they have with their financial bank, they more likely be required to obtain flood insurance, which has gotten pricey.
Under the column that says community improvement DEI, and it says varies, which I interpret as some positives, some negatives. Can you give us some examples of the positives and negatives that that went into consideration of putting varies in that column?
Yes, I can. Um, we had a lot of conversation about this internally as a team, trying to figure out how we could quantify that. And essentially, it was, it was difficult because if you have an existing apartment complex that's low income and it's in the floodplain, and we take it out of the floodplain, that's a positive. But if that land now becomes more valuable, that is purchased by a developer and taken down, and all those individuals are now relocated somewhere else, because now it's more valuable as industrial uh land, is that a positive or negative? And then we've got tho- those, those types of conundrums. I wasn't comfortable that we could sit here on the engineering side and say, we can tell you whether it's high, medium or low because there are so many positives and so many negatives. We have a fair amount of the community in this area out here that has lower income. Uh, English is a second language. Uh, the list goes on. I mean, we look at the state's information and which has been presented for on other topics. And this area right here has a whole mix of different DEI aspects to it. So, when it comes right down to it, I think what we ended up was these are the things that we can stay with a high degree of confidence that if you build a levy, it it creates a better community out there based on not flooding a whole bunch of land. You do an I five blockage, it's better for everybody north and west of I five. But it doesn't do anything for those who are between I five and the creek. Um, the channel improvements based on what you saw, similar thing. So that's, that's how we ended up with this in this fashion. I wish I had a better answer for you, but it's not a precise one on the DEI because we couldn't get to that.
On the levy in the I five wall levy, whatever, whatever that structure is going to be called. Um, the chart that you showed about costs. What kind of maintenance commitment is in terms of both frequency and dollars do structures like that entail?
So if it is a typical levy with a top six to ten feet and you got sides at two to one to three to one slopes, you've got a basically a big pyramid without the top on it. You're talking vegetation control. And so what you're looking to do is keep the vegetation down, specifically any trees or large root balling um organic material that'll start growing in there and cause cause the system, the, the levy to lose its integrity. So we're not talking fifty thousand dollars a year. We're talking a couple of times every few years going out there with a mower, depending on how we want it to look. If it becomes part of a walkway, part of the green space, then we would look to plant low-growing shrubberies on it. That would be acceptable to FEMA. And we would put a, either way, we're going to have to put a gravel path on top of it. So now that becomes a part of the community walking path. They get from Springbrook, they go down park, they go across the creek, they walk over, they get back on the levy, takes them all the way down to Bridgeport and then comes back around. So it becomes a part of a trail and a loop in there. But the maintenance of these types of levies, especially this one, because it's not right at the creek, it's going to be relatively low. The other option um is some type of a flood wall, and that is basically um depending upon the material, that you basically drive into the ground, deep into the ground, and it's interlocked between the two. It doesn't require a lot of maintenance. In fact, you probably have the biggest issue with people going out there and tagging it and having to paint it over. But that, that's it. That's a little more in your face, if you will, looking at it, because you drive up and all of a sudden you're faced with this wall. And you have to have means of getting through it that also protect so that the land on the other side doesn't get flooded when the water rises to it.
And when you look at the levy alternative and I five alternative, uh, and although the I five alternative a couple billion dollars less in terms of the estimate that how do they vary in the percentage that would have to be city dollars versus state dollars or transportation dollars that are focused solely on I five?
That's a good question. The answer is we don't have that yet because we need to have willing partners who are willing to help us fund this and who are willing to help us go after grants at the federal level to help us fund this project. Um, if the Department of Transportation was interested in preserving I five, then that cost would be all on them. Because it's preserving I five, that would my position on that. Now, they may argue that it's also protecting the other part of the city. That's a discussion and negotiation that hasn't even started yet. In twenty twenty-three, what I envision we're going to be doing is taking this information and doing a little bit more of a dog and pony show to the right people. Now, we've talked to all the staff people, so we know we don't have a fatal flaw in any alternatives we have going forward here. Now we need to start talking to the right people at the right levels in government to gain their support, if nothing else, for pursuing federal grants. And there are some federal grants that are, are coming out. Part of our engineering analysis report is going to be a fiscal assessment of what's available for us to pursue. What's the match? What do we need to do? What, what degree of evaluation needs to be done? A lot of this was put together very specifically, especially the business case evaluation. And so that we could take this information and put it into the federal grants and go after the dollars, depending on what alternative we go after.
In our evaluation of, of, of our options, what benefits accrue to JBLM and McCord Field from our doing one of these options?
One of the entities that said they were going to be there but would never show up was JBLM. And we had a couple of different people say, I'm going to be there, and they didn't, they weren't there. So I don't know if I can answer that for you. I do think that there is great value to them on the military readiness side. If I five is not obstructed for weeks at a time with water flooding over top of it. Uh, that was our argument at the beginning, I five, their, their gate coming in off of Bridgeport. Um, traffic jacking everything up, so they can't even get the individuals who both, both the military personnel and the contract personnel getting in to the JBLM through the McCord entrance there. If they can't get in there, there's an impact to them. But um, it's, it's a struggle. I, I think that is also part of the next body of work. Now that we've got this, getting, sitting down with the right people at JBLM too, getting their support in this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bucic. Mr. Mayor.
I assume SSMCP is a willing partner in this discussion, so they can be a gateway to the conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, that would be a good thing to do is make sure that they're included. Any other questions? Well, thank you for the update, significant work and a significant problem to address. I appreciate you doing the hard work and bringing it to our attention and studying the alternatives.
Thank you.
Next, we have our city prosecutor Samantha Johnson, who will give us a prosecution services update tonight, starting on page one eighty-seven of our packets.
Good afternoon, Mayor Waylon, Deputy Mayor Moss and council members, and thank you for having me here tonight to provide you guys with a prosecution services update. Um, so I have submitted a packet and I put together a presentation just to kind of highlight for you guys exactly what your prosecution program is doing for you in this beautiful community. Um, I have noticed kind of throughout the last few months, there's been a lot of discussion about cases, court number cases, law enforcement contacts versus legal contacts with people. So I thought I would just explain it to you guys as generically as possible. And I felt the triangle represented it well. Law enforcement responds to calls for service. Those services may end up in a referral for a review of a charge, or it may just be some sort of call for help, no crime committed. So obviously, law enforcement deals with the majority of our population, the larger numbers. What they refer to our legal department is what we review. We decide whether or not we're going to charge, file charges on individuals referred. And that involves a lot of different things. It involves a prosecutor reviewing a police report to determine whether or not it's in our best interest to pursue charges, whether or not that charge is supported by probable cause. But it also oftentimes requires our staff to be in contact with different civilians in the community to see whether or not they are willing to participate in prosecution. And then, once we make that decision, we then file charges with the court. So the court sees the lower amount of the beginning contacts. So as we're looking at numbers, that just kind of clarifies where we're at in terms of, I've heard court numbers filings are down, but that doesn't necessarily encapsulate everything that the legal department is reviewing. Yes, sir.
Before you go forward, there's a comment you made I need an answer to. So before you make a decision on prosecution, you confer with other members in the civilian community?
Oh, not confer, but it is in order, if we move forward to trial, we do need them to come in and provide testimony. So if they are victim crimes, we contact the victim and ask them, you know, would you be willing to participate in prosecution? That's their answer, yes or no, is not always the deciding factor. It's informative. Certainly with domestic violence, there's cases which we proceed without the victim, but so no, it's not always there. We don't contact them every time, but with victims' crimes, we try.
Got it. Okay. That's what you were referring to. So the victims, got it. Okay.
Yes. Next, I just want to highlight our domestic violence efforts. So in July, we had the Victims' Right Act was enhanced to confer additional rights to all survivors of domestic violence. Previously, it was just to those felony charges, but the legislators changed it to all domestic violence. What that did was increase our number of contacts with victims. So the top of the grid here talks about number of domestic violence victims. We track that number through our stop grant, which helps pay for our office assistant who contacts our domestic violence victims. So those numbers are one victim that we contacted. See how I best explain this. You have one suspect and one victim. There may be multiple referrals for that same victim and defendant, but we only count that once. So as you can see, in 2019, the number was the largest out of all four of these numbers. There was a drop in 2020 and 2021, but we are now back up. We're projected to reach around 800, so to exceed what we had in 2019. The average number of contacts has also gone up, given the new legislation. Upon the victim's request, if they want updates throughout the life of the case, we are contacting them after every hearing and letting them know what is going on with the case, whether or not it was continued or set for trial. The person who's currently in that position, you heard from her at the beginning of this month when she received the proclamation. She speaks four languages, but the primary one that she utilizes is Spanish. So it has increased our contact with the Spanish-speaking community and successful prosecution and referral for services. She's been tracking her translation interpretation for those citizens, and as of September, she's at 153 minutes, which obviously takes a lot of time and attention. We additionally did have our core documents translated to four languages, Spanish, Korean, Russian. And I forget the fourth. It is in my memo. We had those certified by a translation service. So when we get those victims that do not speak English, we can communicate with them as well. And then the number of D V cases filed, that's what we're talking about when the number actually refers, results in a referral for charges to the court. In 2019, we had 695. We're projected to be around 534. I have not yet received updated numbers from the court from September. But based on how it's currently going, when I got the numbers in August, it is projected to be around 534. So jury trials, my apologies, there is a typo here. In 2021, we only had four trials. So jury trials take a significant amount of time. Their preparation by the attorney with the staff, we have to generate subpoenas, order evidence, work with law enforcement, with civilian witnesses if we have them. So it's not just an average review of police report, give a plea offer to defense. There's a lot more work that goes into that from all parts of the program. So obviously, an increase in number, we're already at eight this year, 2021, that should say four. So we've already doubled what we did last year. We do have an additional attorney that was granted through the body worn camera system. She is, that role has helped significantly with the increases in trials, but we have not had our body worn camera system fully deployed.
Is this just D V trials or all trials?
No, all trials. So this year, we've done one DUI trial. I would say about six D V trials and then one non-domestic violence trial. So the four last year, I can't recall off the top of my head what they were. Retail theft enforcement, I know the council was updated about the retail theft emphasis that law enforcement did back in September. There's another one that is planned this October, but I will keep that date to myself. It is a coordination between law enforcement. Obviously, they refer charges. We're not out there advising them or anything while they're in the field. When they make contact, the law enforcement officer gets to make a decision whether or not they're going to arrest the individual and book them into custody or do an added custody referral. On this last emphasis that happened in September, they booked the majority of them into custody unless there was a medical issue that they were denied booking. And then at that point, they're seen by the judge, and we prosecute them. They go to pre-trial trial or guilty plea. They get to decide the course of their case. And then resolutions would include work crew, jail, community service, probation, depending on their record. That emphasis that happened in September, there were 13 suspects and almost $3,000 recovered. That emphasis occurred at Target. And so I think it's a great presence in the community. It lets our larger businesses know that we support them and that we are not, or that we are committed to defer this type of, not defer, deter this type of behavior. And then again, our body worn camera system that I highlighted, at this point, we have 77 cameras in deployment. Estimated full deployment by the end of October, according to Assistant Acting Assistant Chief Allwine. The estimation impacts that we believe we're going to see is there's going to be an increased time to review cases. An average call has two to three officers on it, and if they're all wearing a camera, that's an additional piece of evidence that we have to review. It's going to increase our production of discovery, which our office assistants that support the attorneys, they're requesting that and then uploading it for defense. And then obviously, increased trial time for presentation of evidence to determine whether or not that evidence is admissible or relevant to the case. So there will be an increased workload. We have already seen an increase in workload, certainly with negotiations. Defense attorneys on the other side are feeling that as well. They have to review the evidence prior to accepting a resolution. So at this point, I am available for any questions.
So remind me the numbers on the prosecutor staff that would be performing the jury trials. Is that just one of you, two of you?
We have three full-time attorneys. So there's myself and then two associate city attorneys. And if it came to it, I know City Attorney Walker or Assistant City Attorney Eileen McCain would also come up to the plate.
And I do want to add to that, that because Lakewood as a city, through all of our leadership at the city, we are really well-connected and networked with other cities. And as one example, last summer, our prosecutors helped out Don Carina, who's the prosecutor for the city of Fife, when they were running a little short. In the same way, if we had to, if we had to really just say, we're going to try every case we can find, we would call in some of that network. And you can't do it every month or anything like that. But we like to make sure that the defense knows that we have the depth. We are never going to cave on something due to resources. That's just not one of our options.
My point, not insinuating that we do, but I wanted to make sure that if it was a resource issue, this is the time for us to hear about it, right? Because we're going through budget right now. So we want to make sure you've got the adequate resources to pursue and follow through on council's goal of holding folks accountable. I mean, that really is the policy objective.
Yes, absolutely. And in our budget request, we do have that request for the additional increase for our employee that works with the victims of domestic violence, doing that contact, as her workload has significantly increased with the new legislation. And the majority of our cases set for trial are domestic violence trials. So that is, again, increased communication.
Questions other, I can keep going because I'm the lawyer here tonight. So, you know, I've got all sorts of questions. Do you see a lot of frequent flyers coming back around despite the good work of your department in either forcing them to go through the process? And yet, for whatever reason, they're not getting the services that they need beyond your control, not getting the drug treatment perhaps they need, not getting the mental health counseling they need, and are making an appearance back before your fine prosecutors. Do you see that happening on with regularity?
Yes, the short answer, and for all the reasons that you mentioned, every individual is going to have their own area that they need to focus on. But I will say you have a wonderful navigation team over at LPD that is working to identify those individuals and figure out how we can best address them coming back in and back in and back in.
Right. So anecdotally, from your perspective, having performed this role, having worked with the team at LPD, where are the gaps that we need to be aware of? What is, what is the change that we need to help make happen to make your jobs easier and the community safer?
That's a really big question. I would say from what I'm hearing from all different players in the criminal justice system, from law enforcement to civilians to the court, is there is really a lack of housing and a lack of accountability to be in that housing. The majority of housing that's going to be state provided or grant funded is going to require sobriety. And that's not where these individuals are at. I know certainly with the methadone clinic that was brought in, it brought a large increase of people from Tacoma. They've shared with law enforcement that they were told to come down here, and they're not housed. So being unsheltered in our community certainly leads to different nefarious activities, which brings them here to the court system. So, I mean, in my perfect world, I would love to see methadone clinics require housing in order to refer for services, because then you have a place for them. But I think honestly, housing, sheltering these people.
Is there a common thread in addition to the housing gap? Is there a common thread of drug addiction in many of these cases?
Oh, absolutely. And with them being crimes such as theft and criminal trespass, we can request that, but oftentimes, it's not ordered through the court system.
Meaning the testing to determine whether or not they were under the influence or to do what?
Meaning if they choose to plead guilty, if they're charged with a crime, or they go to trial at sentencing, oftentimes, we see the ordering of treatment on more like persons crimes and DUIs, rather than criminal trespass and theft.
How about on D Vs?
Yes, D V.
Okay, I heard DUI, sorry. Okay. Does that prompt any other questions? Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you. I appreciate your coming before us and doing your best to anticipate what we're interested in. In the discussion in your memo about impaired driving, there seems to be a distinction between DUI trials and something called DUI motion. And I'm not quite sure that I can have a good idea what DUI motion is as an as an action.
So DUI motions happen prior to trial. They're when legal issues are addressed, such as probable cause to arrest, or whether or not they were advised of their constitutional right or procedures were followed. So they're not a question for a jury. They're a question for the judge. And so we have to bring in officers to provide testimony, right briefing, and do oral arguments for the judge. Oftentimes, those motions are dispositive of whether or not we're going to go to trial. If defense prevails, the case goes away. If the city prevails, our negotiating position is a bit stronger. But they do require more preparation than just a traditional pre-trial case where someone pleads guilty.
So the fact that in your memo, there are more motions than actual trials, is that indicative of a procedural problem on the part of the police?
No, that's, we haven't, no, tho- those are positive resolutions. So the city prevailed at those motions at the time this memo was written. City prevailed on those motions, so only one of those cases ended up going to trial. The other ones resolved.
The others.
They pled guilty to whether it be a DUI or an amendment from the DUI, but they weren't dismissed by the court.
Okay, so what circumstances routinely occur on impaired driving, things of where we don't pursue charges?
Where we would not pursue charges?
Yeah. Do we do, I'm sure we have some of those. What's what's a common reason why that 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 would be?
If I'm not filing DUI charges, it's because there's not sufficient evidence to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that somebody committed that crime. So we're going to need all procedures followed by law, followed by law enforcement, and then some sort of chemical testing, whether that be a breath test or a blood test. So yeah. So a straight not file on a DUI is very, very uncommon. And it would be followed by, you know, discussions with law enforcement about what could be done better next time if that were to happen. The delay in filing is due to a backlog at the Washington State Toxicology Lab. That's something we have no control over. It's funding from the state and their resources. It takes significant amount of time to get forensic scientists trained and certified by the state. And so we have two years to file DUIs. They have been getting us the blood within two years, but it is a significant delay.
Thank you. And in your memorandum, you made a reference to the Friendship Diversion Program. Again, something else that I'm not real familiar with. Could you describe that to us and what sort of what are the eligible crimes with this phrase?
Yes, we do have a policy for the eligible crimes. It's a long list, so I'd be happy to send it to you, but we do have a written policy. There are crimes typically first offense, second offense on thefts, sometimes hit and run unattended, if there's like property damage to a vehicle. It can be criminal trespass charges, not DUIs, not domestic violence, not obstruction of law enforcement officer. And it is a agency through Pierce County, and they receive a referral from us. They contact the suspect in the case. And depending on what the charge that is referred, they have criteria. Sometimes they have to do a consumer awareness class. Sometimes it's community service. For the hit and runs, it's paying restitution to the person whose car was damaged. And if they complete that program, Friendship Diversion writes us a letter back and says, they did everything we asked. And so we'll decline to file charges. But that's used on those individuals who don't have a significant criminal history, or perhaps they did, and it's been 20 years and they've committed a theft. We refer them to those services to hopefully get them connected so they don't come back. If they don't complete the program, then we get a rejection letter from Friendship Diversion, and then we file charges on them.
So would persons apprehended during shoplifting emphasis activities that the police department has been initiating, perhaps be referred, be eligible for this program?
They could be eligible, depending, the ones in September, none of them were referred.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have a few more questions, sorry. So I don't recall, because the slides you have for us tonight don't necessarily have the information that you may or may not have seen on the budget document that talked about the number of filings and charges going through the system, which anecdotally from memory have gone down by a factor of 40 to 50% over the last three years. So I guess my question is, on the prosecution side, of the charges that you make, how many roughly go to diversion or pre-pre-trial adjudication or agreement, resolution by agreement versus onto trial, whether bench or jury?
Yeah, I don't have an exact percentage for you, but I would guess that no more than 3% gets set for trial. The rest would either be by way of negotiation, or perhaps civilians don't want to participate, and so we end up dismissing them. The Friendship Diversion, I would say, is The Friendship Diversion, I would say, is one to two percent, it's a very low number. Not necessarily by way of lack of referral, people just don't answer and show up to the program.
Got it. So nine, uh, jury trials, at least in 2022, or eight, whatever, to date, right? So how many are tried before just the bench?
They've all been jury trials, no bench trials.
No bench trials, is that the standard because they request trial by jury typically?
Yes.
Okay, and of the eight that have been tried, uh, to the jury, uh, what have been the outcomes in terms of either guilt or, uh, innocent verdicts?
I think this is off memory, six have been guilty and two have been not guilty.
And of the six that have been adjudicated guilty by a jury, what have been the sentences for those folks adjudicated by the court, roughly? I mean, are they getting little time, reasonable time within the range, or no time?
Jail time, none.
Is that consistent with the, the standard range that you, as a prosecutor's office, have recommended to the court?
Not always, no.
Okay, tell me more about that. So in how many of the cases of the six, for instance, in this year, uh, in which a favorable prosecution verdict came back, uh, did the court not sentence the guilty party to any sort of jail time?
I don't have those specific numbers for you today, but
I'd like them.
A bit of, okay, I can look into that.
Yeah.
I just, sometimes jury trials take about a year to a year and a half from the time of filing.
Right.
And oftentimes, there's very favorable mitigation evidence presented to the judge at the time of sentencing. Um, so the city may or may not be seeking jail time depending on what that individual has been doing since the time of charging to the time of jury trial. But I would be happy to look into those.
And since we only have six of the eight that we're talking about, uh, to your best recollection, are any one or more of the six frequent flyers, meaning they've come through our system more than once?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions? Well, we just want to make sure that, that your time is well spent, obviously, that you have the resources you need to do your jobs appropriately, and that we feel on behalf of the residents that people are being held accountable through the system. If truly a, a prosecutor, uh, made a charge, and as you've indicated, and we all know, you don't make a charge in bad faith, you make one in good faith because you believe you have the evidence to support the charge. And we want to make sure as best we can that the process is being followed, and people who need to be held accountable are being held accountable.
I agree, and thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thanks. That is it on the items for, uh, the city managers' reports, anything else, Mr. Coffield?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh.
I, I always have something extra.
Yes, please proceed.
Unless it's eleven thirty at night. Um, just wanted to let you know, today was the deadline for applicants to submit to the, uh, request for proposals as it relates to the five million dollars in ARPA funds that the city council, um, directed to be set aside in the, uh, three areas, um, emergency food bank capital, for which we received, um, two submittals, uh, permanent low income housing, for which we received one submittal, and veterans' emergency shelter, for which we received two submittals. So out of the three areas, we received five submittals. On the emergency food bank capital, um, one was from, um, EFN, Emergency Food Network, for 1.5 million. The other was for Nourish Pierce County for 2 million, under permanent, permanently low income housing. Um, the, the, um, submittal was from Lhasa for 3.5 million. Then for Veterans Emergency Shelter, one was from Tacoma Rescue Mission on behalf of the Community First Village for 1.5 million, and the other was, um, FOB Hope, which is an organi- veterans organization out of King County for a little over 3.2 million. So in total, that totals over 11.7 million, again, for which the council has, um, allocated 5 million. So we're going to go through the RFPs, and, um, we hope to bring back, um, that information to you here, hopefully in November, early December. Um, you know, one of the things that we've been working on over the years and made some significant progress has to do with the agreement that the city signed with Sound Transit a number of years ago, specific to the, um, maintenance and security of the Sounder, um, transit station. Um, you know, on the security side, at one time, the city was paying $250,000 a year, um, primarily to Pierce Transit, so we would have somebody watch cameras. Um, we subsequently switched that to our police department, so somebody can watch it there, and we don't have to pay $250,000, and yes, that was the solution on that. Um, and then on the general maintenance and operations, for example, the landscaping or fixing the elevator or just general maintenance issues at the facility, what happens is Sound Transit goes out there, their staff, and they identify issues that need to be addressed. They then send us a work order, we then subsequently send folks out to, um, um, to address it, and then we cycle through there on just general grass cutting and landscaping and things like that. Um, that component, on average, costs us about $65,000 to $70,000 a year. Um, uh, just last week, Sound Transit reached out to us to kind of continue that dialogue. Given that they are expanding their footprint here in the South Sound, specifically in Lakewood with their new maintenance facility, um, it looks like maybe they want to take on that maintenance themselves because it is their building, it's their facility, they know it better than we do. And, um, so, um, we, again, we've had some discussion, so hopefully we can get out in some shape, form, or manner from that, 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 that agreement. So, um, again, just wanted to give council a courtesy heads up on that. Um, last week I had mentioned that the Gimhee City, uh, Republic of, uh, uh, Korea delegation is, uh, coming, uh, Sister City is coming to visit here, and our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, met with our, um, Lakewood Sister Cities Association, uh, President Connie Colacetti, uh, last week. And so, um, the, uh, delegation is, um, which consists of seven members from, from Gimhee City, including their mayor, will be arriving on Sunday, December 4th. The Sister Cities Association is, uh, hosting a welcome dinner at the Tacoma Country and Golf Club that evening, which all of you will be invited to. Um, and then, um, on Monday, um, December 5th, the following day, we're looking to have a meeting between, um, again, this body, based on your availability, um, right here, probably in the city council chambers, to, um, discuss and possibly execute a memorandum of, uh, understanding, outlining the mutual commitments that we have to each city. This is not something that's new, this was done in 2019, however, because of COVID, really, uh, not a lot happened in 2020 and 2021. So again, this is to reestablish and, and further enhance that relationship with Gimhee City. So then they, they will be, um, departing on December 6th. So they're here for a very, very, uh, sh- short period of, short period of time. Um, as it relates to your schedule, just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up. This Thursday, from 11:00 AM to noon, right here in City Hall, um, our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland is going to host a Vietnam War era veterans' pinning ceremony to honor local veterans in partnership with the US Vietnam Veterans Pin Commission. This is an opportunity to recognize the service of, um, identified veterans or their surviving family members to, um, um, with a lapel pin, just recognizing them with a symbol of gratitude for their service and sacrifice to the United States of America. And, uh, so again, that'll be right here in the council chambers on Thursday, beginning at 11, 11:00 AM. Um, also, as you, we look out into your calendar, um, this Saturday, EFN is ho- hosting their annual abundance dinner and auction event at the McGavick Center, so they're back on after it was a two-year hiatus. And so, um, if you're interested in attending that, you know, just go to their website and, um, sign up. Um, I'm sure they would, uh, they would appreciate your, 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 your presence there. Um, and then on October 27th, um, again, the mayor will be hosting, um, the Community Coffee House down at the Fort Stilliken Park Pavilion. And, um, the latest update we have, Mayor, is to, um, bring back the transportation project, since I think we had one or two people show up back in, uh, back in July.
Well, we've got great successes to, uh, expound upon, given some recent street work, so it'll be good.
Very good. Um, also, um, as a follow-up from Saturday, um, I'm going to send you some dates, um, that I'd like you to consider as it relates to, um, having a joint meeting, this body with your Pierce County Council member, uh, Jenny Hitchen, from, of course, uh, the Mighty Six District. And, uh, we've, and just based on your calendars, we've identified either Thursday, December 1st, Thursday, December 8th, Tuesday, December 13th, or Wednesday, December 14th. So those are some dates that we've identified, just again, based on what's going on, um, those couple of weeks. And, um, so we'll send that, we'll send that over to you. Um, also, Mayor, just wanted to mention along the lines of retail theft, uh, Police Chief Mike Zarro notified me today that he's working with both, uh, the Lakewood Chamber and the Washington State Retail Association about having some kind of a meeting here in Lakewood. Come to find out, they've already been doing that in Lakewood, and meeting with businesses and such. So, um, looking to identify, I think we have identified a date and time in November, and I will get that to you, and we'll get that on your calendars if you'd like to attend.
Yeah, I'd love to be part of that and do kind of a welcoming thing and chat about the thanks for their participation and our expectation that we're all part of the solution.
Yep.
So, that'd be good.
That's my report, Mayor.
Any questions, Mr. Coffield? And this Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, um, you talked about the maintenance at the, um, station, uh, Sounder Station. Are the birds still roosting there? Like, because that was a mess.
I, I, I do not know, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry.
I haven't been there for a while, but it was terrible.
Yeah, okay.
They were working on it, I just was wondering if they had gotten it satisfied.
I, I don't know, and I, I do remember hearing something about that, it was a number of years ago.
Yes.
I'm going to presume it's been addressed.
Thank you.
I'm kind of surprised he doesn't know about birds of a feather, you know?
You know, Deputy Mayor, as Deputy Mayor, you can jump in and actually take over if things get a little your, your council rules do allow for that.
I don't think there's a bad humor line out of council rules, but. Any other questions, Mr. Coffield? Great, very good, well, I appreciate the report, and thank you for, uh, both Mr. Bucic and Ms. Johnson's reports tonight. And tho- those are really helpful, despite my blithering of questions, sorry about that, but. Yeah, no problem. Okay, let's turn to council comments, so we can get out of here on time. Councilmember Farmer, want to kick us off tonight?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Branstadter?
That, um, would note that the Korean Women's Association, uh, is reaching its, you know, in, in, in the beginning of November, is reaching its, uh, 50-year milestone from when it came, it came into fruition, and over those times, it's obviously expanded and done a great many things, but it's had an impact, uh, uh, on Lakewood, on JBL, and now, and now regionally, and um, so, uh, I would like to look into perhaps com- commending them with a proclamation at our first meeting in November, uh, to be able to go and do that, if we could, uh, you know, put something together with them, and if, uh, you know, we're looking to, to go and, and, and do that. I, uh, do think that, um, as we're reaching the end of the tree preservation process, okay, and, 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 and and, and we're, we're almost there, we're just being careful to make sure that we've got all the eyes dotted and Ts crossed to be able to go and do that. And we're, we're going to end up with, I think what we always knew we were going to end up with, we're going to end up with something that is much better than the current stagnant ordinance that's been in place for 20, 20, 20 years, and replace it with a, with a code that while it doesn't go as far as some would like, is going to be, uh, has elements of proactivity in it with a, with a, with a, with a program that's going to keep tree preservation evolving in, in the state and in, in, in the city, to be able to go and do that. So I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are, to be able to go and do that. However, uh, I would like, now that we're at the end, to currently bring back the consideration of declaring the Gary Oak as the city tree, which I didn't necessarily think was, when I, I didn't think it was an element of the ordinance, and it's not an element of the ordinance, but I also think it's the right thing to do, if there was, if there is any tree that's going to be the city tree, uh, you know, it, it ought to be the, the Gary Oak, yeah. Even more so than the chrysanthemum is the city flower, or the camellia is the city flower, which I, 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 I'd have trouble deciding why that is. So, uh, you know, I'm wondering if there's a separate resolution, uh, on the agenda at the next meeting, which would then occur after we take consideration of the tree ordinance, if we could also put on the agenda for consideration the resolution to declare the Gary Oak as the city tree.
Support for that, I certainly have no, uh, opposition to the recommendation and suggestion. Any thoughts or comments?
That was one of the things that I think that people are real, have actually thought of as the end of the city tree, so I have no objections.
Councilmember Farmer?
I'm definitely interested in having the conversation, and I vaguely recall that when we talked about this before, we wanted to make sure there weren't any unintended downstream consequences. So I'd like to revisit that conversation before taking the vote.
Absolutely.
I agree with Councilmember Farmer on that, because we don't want to, uh, restrict us in any way by declaring it a tree, but I do, um, a city tree, um, but I do love the idea of it. I think people already assume that it is our city tree anyways, so just making sure that it's done in the right way.
For the fact that we're giving the heightened protection in the about-to-be-adopted updated tree preservation ordinance, perhaps there's lesser downside than we once perhaps imagined how it might impact ongoing the, uh, land use hearings before the hearing examiner and the like, but I will let, I will defer to staff on that. It sounds like we're okay in bringing something forward, whether that gives you enough time between now and November 7th, that's really up to you, Mr. Coffield, on that, but, uh, it's not a bad time to do it subsequent to the potential ordinance. Anything else, Mr. Branstadter? That's it, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had the opportunity to be one of the judges for the Clover Park High School Daffodil Princess Representation, uh, last week, and it was, it was a great honor and a great fun, and really enjoyed doing that. I know that the mayor will be doing it for Lakes High School coming up. So, and they also requested to come in front of council once they have their full court. Um, so that is something that they would like to do, so I'm putting that out there, thank you.
Thank you, anything else? That's it? And before I go to the Deputy Mayor, Mr. Branstadter, a quick question on the Korean Women's Association, they have an event coming up. Don't they have a gala coming up that we should put on the calendar? Just, just to make sure people have the gala on their calendar if they wish to attend, I got an invitation card, you probably did as well. So it's something that, that is an important organization in our community and would be good to support, so Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you for not forgetting me, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
I would just say that I, to our city manager and, uh, Mayor, I enjoyed the tour that we took on our, uh, trip, uh, following the case in other colors, because I hadn't been through the new areas in, uh, Oak, in, Oakbrook? Woodbrook. And so it was interesting to see the improvements that have been made, so thank you for the tour.
Want to talk about your big splashy write-up and, uh, paper and this kind of thing?
I am honored, I don't even, thank you. Um, it is a privilege and a pleasure to serve as an honorary commander, and, and it's opportunities for me to talk about our veterans' court, and some of the other things that we're trying to do as far as helping out with our veterans and that, so. Uh, that was, uh, that's great, and as far as the other write-ups, I'm excited, the responses are really exciting to me about the gala for recognizing Dr. Claudia Thomas's Community Citizen Award. Community Citizen Award, Service Award. And so we're in the process of planning, and there's more to it than I realized, and I'm glad we got an early start. So.
Fantastic. Yes, look forward to that.
I look forward to my colleagues supporting me and being there with me during those times. So thank you, including my staff. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again on the honorary commander designation. Well deserved. Just a couple of comments. I had the uh honor of enjoying the two-two striker brigade casing ceremony with Councilmember Branstadter and uh Deputy Mayor Moss and Councilmember Anderson and the city manager over the, the two-twos farewell, so to speak, as they deploy to Korea. So it was a really nicely uh done and well-attended ceremony. Uh, the retreat on Saturday, I thought, was was well-done. Thanks to staff for putting that together. I think we accomplished quite a bit on the legislative agenda packet. Look forward to the updates on that. Uh, on Sunday, I attended the Film, Art, and Books Festival put on by the Fab Committee that received funding from Lodging Tax, and I am here to tell you it was well-attended. People enjoyed themselves. I did the Titanic presentation that was put on by a gentleman by the name of Peter Cook. It was, again, very well-done, very well-attended. The volunteers who put that work on, I mean, it's a labor of love. These guys really do good work. It's a free event, and I think the folks who attended really enjoyed it. So I want to thank council for allowing the lodging tax recommendation to support the Fab to go through this last year. Uh, congratulations to uh finance staff, certainly Mr. Caffield and his executive leadership team for achieving the triple crown on the uh financing municipal finance accolades. It is a huge tribute to the city to be one of, what, three hundred nineteen cities and municipalities around the country. Three hundred seventeen to be recognized, and that, that's a huge deal. And I forwarded that link to the write-up, and many of the folks uh to whom I forwarded it, you know, were just very laudatory with their comments about the city's finances and stewardship. So thanks to staff for that. Um, other than that, uh, in conjunction with Mr. Branstadter's comments about the long-storied chapter we now come to for the tree preservation code amendments, I I don't need to say more than I did. I think we all care about it uh deeply. I think that our staff has done yeoman's work over many, many months, along with many members of the public, in providing meaningful comment and feedback, so that we can make the best public policy we can. As Mr. Branstadter noted, and I think as we all feel, this is one of those wonderful situations of democracy in action, where uh many folks won't be happy, many folks will be, and that means we probably hit it somewhere midstream, right down the middle, and we all hope that it's going to improve the status quo and and provide a long-term legacy that Lakewood is a community that cares about its environment. The climate change chapter work that we passed tonight certainly is indicative of that intent, and is reflective of the the straightforward fact that while we are a legislative body, we are also neighbors. Uh, we are also folks who live, work, and play here in Lakewood, and we do care. So thank you for your hard work on that, uh, all of you. And with that, unless there's any further alibis, Councilmember Farmer?
Uh, your words are resonating with me on the the amazing work that that has happened on the the Tree Preservation Committee. And I'm wondering, I don't know what um, what the city manager or Ms. Grimley have planned, but this is a, an ideal opportunity for an infographic or a, or a one-pager that that highlights all of the community touchpoints, all of the comments received, um, and and really talks about the protections that are being put into place. Um, ensuring that, if if we, if it's voted on, obviously. Um, but uh, the memos are great, but they're not very uh digestible by the public. And that would be a good opportunity to to plain talk um, a- all the things that are going on. Just throwing that out.
Very good point, and I think that's one of the reasons we're looking at, if if the council adopts it at the next regular session, uh, I believe the manager has requested a a period sufficient within which to make sure that the public is adequately educated uh, about the talking points and and the salient points about the im- implementation of the new tree code preservation points of interest. So more to follow on that, but excellent point. Any else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.